Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. My name is Don Smiker. I'm gonna call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Sinus. To my right, I have Nen Plagel, Bjorn from IT, Lisa from the Auditor's Office. We have Luann back as Executive Assistant. And first up on our agenda today is a public hearing for the resolution of Level B roads. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And Jayden, how we doing this morning?
Good.
Morning.
Morning. So from our first public hearing, we made three revisions to that initial resolution. First change being we removed two hundred and fifty eighth street from the resolution after we've had further discussion. I reached out to the other ninety nine counties, had a discussion with the county attorney. So based on those discussions, we removed two fifty eighth street from on our Level B resolution. We, the second change being we removed two seventy fourth street from being on the Level B resolution. And the third change was that we adjusted the Level B termini for Ninetieth Street to be a portion of Ninetieth Street was from seventy fourth street going north. About thirteen hundred-ish feet were proposed to be Level B. That is no longer. So Level B will start further north on Ninetieth Street. Other than those changes, the rest is all the same as previously brought forward.
Has anybody got any feedback?
I have. I received, you know, a few calls and we talked and we, we discussed exactly what we just discussed here and what the Level Bs that already were Level Bs designated, not in a resolution, but in the minutes from years past. And yeah, I think everybody was satisfied when their conversation ended. So I didn't hear any negative, any negative feedback after then.
I have not received any. Jayden, have you?
Nope. Other than after our first public hearing, there was, before we had a discussion with the county attorney, there was, I had some calls regarding two seventy fourth street, but uh since the new changes have been brought forward and posted on our website and stuff, there I have not received any calls.
Right. All I had was one after our public hearing, kind of the two seventy fourth, why it shouldn't be.
Is there anybody here from the public who would like to speak today, either online or in person? If so, stand up, state your name and, and any concerns, comments?
I just signed in. Gene Rollink, Bellevue.
Gene?
Uh, I got here a little late. I'm sorry. I assumed you were talking about the road.
Yes, sir.
And um, this is for the final passage.
Um, this is the, so this is for a resolution. This is a public hearing before we pass the resolution, correct?
Yes. Okay. My, after being here for the previous meeting and talking a little later on and with the discussion with the county attorney and in the newspaper, that question about will there be any consideration whatsoever to necessary limited services? Once that becomes a Class B road or those become a Class B road.
Two seventy fourth and two fifty eighth have been removed from being Class B. They will be, they will stay as is.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else?
Is really the states. Well, my name is Alexia Yacklin. I was here at the former meeting also. Um, I, I don't know if this is the forum in which to thank you for that consideration because it is of immense benefit, um, I know to the commerce that goes on with our neighbors, but also two seventy fourth street is the only access that we have to our farmland. So, um, and interestingly enough, since the last meeting, there not only has been a huge tree that's gone down that I think the county is taking care of, but um, also a fire on that road. And they've had to pump water from the, from the creek. I mean, I'm sure there would be other, other considerations for that. But anyway, we're, we're very grateful for that consideration to remove two seventy fourth.
Again, Alexis said, again, we, we agreed and we talked about it and we're not interested in going backwards with our, with our road construction and our maintenance. Um, the issue was for us to find out was if it's classified as a Level A, the certain need hasn't to be a certain width or shoulder or, or ditch. So we had to make sure that we're covered. If it's classified as a Level A, that we don't have to have all of these requirements put into it. So that was one of our.
So, so um, I know it was proposed before. We, we put the signs up and then maybe those signs alone um, cover the county's liability, but would not other signs like road narrows or no shoulder or something like that? Would not putting other signs up serve the same purpose, you know, protecting the county?
Those are all, those are, those are all things we're considering, but right now we're just with trying to get, making the paperwork match the maps in reality.
Well, thank you.
That's what we're doing. So anybody else would like to address the public hearing today?
Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
Sorry.
Oh, do you have something yet? I'd just like to thank the board for your decision.
Okay. You're good. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
I'd second that.
I have a motion by Mike, second by Nen to close the public hearing on level, the resolution for the Level B roads. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Jay, you have the fourth.
So based on that, uh, we recommend the approval of resolution for the Level B area service B road classifications and Lisa probably has that number.
Eleven eighteen.
Eleven eighteen, yeah.
I would second.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve resolution eleven eighteen dash oh five dash twenty seven dash twenty twenty five for the area service Level B road classifications. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And so following up on that, then we have a bunch of signs ordered and in stock right now for the appropriate signs for Level Bs. So we'll start putting those work orders in to get those put up where they are needed for the roads that currently are not signed. So, um, next is talk about the Timber City Adventure Race. So last week we received an email, working the right way permit, uh, regarding. Yeah. Oh, sorry, sorry. Uh, let, let me step back then. Thank you, Lisa. Um, so the road improvement policy, I will recommend tabling. John Keys and his assistant are still reviewing that yet, just to make sure.
Okay.
All the verbiage is how it needs to be. So, um, recommend tabling that until next, or there's no action.
Your agenda.
Yeah, perfect. Now talk about the adventure race.
Okay. Well, the adventure race, uh, is on June twenty eighth. And I think it's the same route as last year.
Correct.
What they are asking of us, the county, or specifically our department, is to do a closure of Hurstville Road from the Limestone Kilns to Pershing Road, which is right there, the city limits of Macopita, right by the wastewater treatment plant. And then also us, what they call a soft closure of the Hurstville Road and Rockdale Road intersection. So, uh, what that allows cars to cross Hurstville Road, but not enter onto it. Like, so if you're coming from Rockdale to sixty third, head toward sixty one, you could cross, uh, but not go on to Hurstville Road, at least until the event is done. And.
The same thing with.
That's the same thing with last year.
Yep, everything, everything should be the same. And they did request it that a deputy staff that intersection, which I have forwarded that request to the sheriff's office. Uh, so that way. Yes, he did acknowledge it. So.
So was there any issues with closing that section from Hurstville to the Limestone Kilns end?
Last year, last year went really well as far as I can recall.
I can understand they could easily go around, but that's, that's a county road now, other than, I mean, I understand it was old sixty one, but that's all county, correct?
Okay.
A couple of years ago, there was confusion. It was a lot of cluster because they closed Hurstville onto the, or sixty one onto the, um, the Hurstville Road right there by the Kilns. And they also closed sixty one to Rockdale off of sixty one. And that, that made a lot of confusion. Keeping Rockdale open and really alleviated a lot of that. So, um, and I know they also last year, uh, the county took some signs out when they were putting the road closed signs. Um, Chamber had some big biking signs or whatever. I think it was Randy last year that did it. He actually said that they, and we talked, you guys are storing those signs or whatever.
Yep.
If they can put those back out, that would be.
Yeah, yep, we do have those stored at our shop right now. So.
So I'm going to motion to approve the road closure for the event as presented.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve the road closure for the Timber City Adventure Race on the twenty eighth of June as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
No, it doesn't state a specific time. I'd imagine it's on eighth till sometime.
The race starts about seven thirty, eight o'clock. So.
It's usually done around noon, one o'clock-ish.
Yeah. Yeah, they need to be out by, so I know last year I was putting signs out by seven in the morning.
And what we can do is that, that's obviously a Saturday, correct?
But we can, we can coordinate all that or whatever.
Yeah, because we can place the signs out along, alongside the road for.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, next up is personnel stuff. So we received word from last week from our motor grader operator on the Bellevue shop that, uh, he is resigning from his position effective June third. Yes, June third. Um, so, uh, he is, uh, James Dunn is the operator. He is leaving to go pursue personal interest in business matters. So wish him the best. Uh, and I do thank him for his time here.
Is that national item motion?
Yes, just, yes.
Make a motion to approve.
What depot again, or what?
Bellevue.
I would second the motion to accept the employee resignation.
Um, we got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the resignation for the, what was his name again?
James Dunn.
James Dunn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wish him well.
And we will start the internal posting of that process. Uh, and then shortly thereafter, whatever, however the process plays out, the.
So we cut the timeframe down on some of that, didn't we, last round?
Two days now, instead of a week.
Yeah.
So we'll be able to fast track that a little bit. Uh, last are a couple of entrance permits. First one is for Troy Cook. Um, it's a field entrance off of three hundred and twentieth street in the Prairie Springs Township, Section twenty five. Requires a culvert. That's listed on here. Um, meets all the site distance. So we recommend approval. Let's move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve Troy Cook's, uh, field entrance on Prairie Spring, Prairie Springs Township, Section twenty five on three twentieth street. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And last is another field entrance for Christina Burkle on two hundredth street in the Perry Township of Section one. This one does not require a culvert and it meets all the site distance. So we recommend approval of this one as well.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the field entrance in Prairie Township, Section one, two hundredth street for Christina Burkle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, I can give a quick update on construction, uh, especially as regards to Z thirty four. Uh, if you recall, last week talked about there'd be some, uh, PCC or concrete repairs that would need to be done on that. And it's likely looking like that will require another closure. Um, so our sign department has made some homemade signs to put advance warning. I mean, it's not going to be like no LED sign, but just a hand painted sign that we can place out there once we get work from the contractor, when they expect that closure. And it would only be for a few days, just enough for them to tear out the concrete, make the repairs, put it back. And once it gained strength, it'll open right back up again. So it won't be the two week timeframe like it was before, but still be a closure nonetheless.
Will it close the whole bridge?
Okay. So we have, we'll put the detour signs back up, uh, which we still got work in the right way from the DOT for. But it's just another inconvenience is a huge thing. At least planting season is done now and school is out, to my knowledge. Uh, but hey, it's gotta get repaired because when the DOT does their final inspection walkthrough, they, it'll get in order. So just gotta get repaired.
Now's the time.
Yeah. It'll be at no cost to us as well. So.
On the same road, are them shoulders staying the way they are? I mean, it seems like where the gravel, it's like a drastic drop for like some mailboxes and if you hit that edge, you're gonna be more than off the edge.
I can have them look, or I can look at it. I know once the pavement markings get down on all the hill, that edge will still be there, but the shoulder will appear wider because we'll have two foot of it's paved right now without pavement markings. It looks like the whole road is.
Right.
You only have like two foot of shoulder, but, uh, I can.
But it just feels like, you know, you gotta foot drop off, you know, versus if they would have tapered it.
Yeah, I can have them take a look.
The rocks up to the height of the block top.
Yes, yes. But it's just, you got that.
Well, you got six inches more of block top there. I guess you raised it up that much, but.
Yeah, it's.
But you still got your mail, you know? But there's a lot of them. I mean, obviously them driving on it's gonna wear it down, but.
Is there a percentage of slope on, on that?
Uh, I think out there it just had to be three to one on a four slope.
All right.
Maine and Summit, they are, uh.
I heard it was supposed to be done June second, but they're thinking maybe the week of the second.
Yeah, it just depends on, uh, retaining what we finished this week. The, the concrete crews are actually up there forming up sidewalk. I don't know if they'll pour any today or they'll pour some this week for sure. Uh, but then following that, they'll place topsoil and do all the final restoration. Uh, so yeah, sometime next week. Most likely is when it'll, I foresee it getting back open barring any, uh, unforeseen issues.
Did that run a little longer than like?
About one week. They still, they still have proper working days yet, but they anticipated it being done sooner. But the, when the project first, before it started, the private utilities need to relocate and that took one additional week longer than what they had anticipated. So kind of carried down the line. But, uh, it's going well, but.
Yeah.
Take time.
Oh, man.
Little pain with the game.
In City Monmouth, asphalt work should be starting, uh, next week. So.
Reclaim come along yet or is that on hold for a bit?
On hold this week, just due to the moisture last week and, uh, some of the guys not being here and just kind of clean some other things up.
Catching up.
But starting next week, if, unless we, it doesn't look like we're supposed to get too much rain, but starting next week again, they'll fire back up and keep on moving.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you very much. Is there any visitors or citizens with us today that would like to address the board? Well, I don't see any online there here. So we'll move on. Next is Nathan Jones with the County Conservation Director for the Departmental Updates.
Morning.
Morning, guys. How are you?
Good.
Mary, you joining them or?
Nope. They have a board every once in a while. Keep me on my toes, so I don't forget something. Um, just give you guys kind of an update from what's going on and then our last board meeting.
Okay.
All camping season's open. Um, been slow so far, other even the holiday weekend, we weren't full, but we're not usually full this first holiday. So coming, um, I think it's usually graduation season and stuff that kind of keeps stuff slow. Um, so we got the cave, or the UTV signs up for a temporarily opening for the parks. So people can get their UTVs in that are registered, the ball and staple.
I seen some of them up there this weekend.
Yep, so.
Doesn't seem to be a problem.
Hasn't been a problem. Um, I think the only thing we're maybe gonna see is golf carts that aren't registered um, as right or meet in the state regulations, but, um, I haven't had a chance to talk to the park rangers.
I don't think guard, golf carts are addressed in any regulation, state, county, city, otherwise.
They don't, they don't meet the code. Most, there's some that do. Some can probably have the taillights and the mirrors and the horn that can get registered, but most of them don't. Um, I saw several when I was putting my boat in there this weekend. Rangers, I don't think saw any, which I'm not gonna go out of my way to address them. So, um, so, um, that's probably the, um, biggest thing. Got the dock in Sabio Friday. Something we got, we're gonna need to address. I'm starting to realize that dock's falling apart, the Jersey dock at the ramp in Sabio. One at Spruce is the same age. So, um, that's probably something I'm gonna have to try to search funding out. Um, after putting it in, the wheel fell off Friday trying to get that dock in. So that's Sabio. So I know Spruce is gonna be the same issue if they're the same age. So, um, but, um, ramps poured at Spruce. He's got a little asphalt work and a little sidewalk work to do, um, due to, um, changes in the engineered plans. So, um, that, that project originally was just surveyed by remote was what the engineer did. You know, I don't know how they do that somehow. It had some mistakes in length and width, causing some problems. So we gotta do a little bit of a sidewalk extension on the east side of the ramp to level up to what is the parking lot now instead of having a big drop off there like they do on the, on the west side. So we, we think we're gonna address the west side by leaving what was there with the curb. And a little step on our staff will have to try to repair the step in the future here. Um, in that east side, we're gonna try to do a sidewalk and a little bit more of a wall extension. So, um, that project hopefully, all the ramp is poured on. I'm really hoping if the rain stays away today and tomorrow, we get that other sidewalk poured and we can have people at least getting their trailers in on that ramp this weekend. And then I can see if there's any other issues from there.
That wall on the east side, was that meant to stay that high or is that?
Well, it was designed that way. I have been questioning and me and the contractor have been talking about taking off at least one step. And I told our staff, we're gonna probably have to build some kind of railing system.
Yeah, just, I just, you know, because kids, I mean, it's almost two foot wide, so they're gonna go.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna jump up it. So, um, I was talking to the rangers and stuff and I think we'll probably have to attach some kind of, probably decking railing or something and into that because it, it's too high. It's dangerous in my opinion at some point.
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to be. Why would it need to be that high above the fog wall or the harbor wall, you know?
I don't think it needs to. And Jayden went over and looked at it and I fortunately wasn't able to meet him there and I was, I haven't gotten you with that late last week. So I was gonna go over to his office after this and see if there was any reason he thought it needed to be, stay that high. Um, at least get the top. There's probably four blocks that are, at least could go in my opinion, across the top and then extend it. It's still gonna be three foot high, but better than falling off a five foot wall.
Right.
Careful climbs on it. So that, that project's at least kind of took close to a wrap up. Um, and usable hopefully soon. Um, I'm, I'm excited to get that done and people into the harbor.
While we're on Spruce, have you opened up the bathrooms on the south side?
Yes, they opened them up. We were waiting on the plumber. So he got there Friday finally to, so I think the crew got it open up Friday afternoon. So, um, hopefully they stay. I know they were working on, somebody used them and plugged them, so broke the toilet this weekend. So they were working on it. It's fine. I talked to the crew. So, um, those are open. So other than that, kind of regular park stuff going on. Um, getting some of our loose ends tied up with budget stuff at the end of the year and going from there. So, um, we got about a week left of week and a half or two this budget year. So, um, there's some things that were in our budget that I held off on. Um, just due to this ramp cost and some of that stuff I was concerned about. Um, the shared UTV that we put in the budget with the sheriff department, we hadn't pursued yet because I was a little nervous about funding and a few of the law enforcement safety items that we had in that thing. So, um, we may look at those this week and go from there.
Bridgeport.
Bridgeport. Finally, think I just, as I was walking in this morning, got the permit emailed to me. So, um, I think we could start moving forward with getting ready to bid that out. Um, that's a good conversation because I don't know how we want to put that working window because I don't, we're in that busy season now.
Yeah, it's.
So it's, it's one I would love to just say, we can get a contractor to start middle of August, but I know that kind of cuts into some of the busy month, but.
Well, the bridge right now on the river level makes a, a huge determination on, uh, on river traffic right now. Because I know last year they shut down because they were popping tubes and.
Oh, so maybe that's gonna be an issue this summer too. I might need to talk to the local contractor to see, um, what he's seeing for traffic on that section. But, um, I, I mean, I hate to get us in a pinch where they don't get it done by freeze open weather and stuff. So.
How many working days you planning on for that or?
I don't have a set on there. Um, I figured I maybe would sit down with Jayden with the plans we have on hands and just see what his thoughts are, what they could get done, um, this time. So I know better. Um, that. So I'd love to get that project going because I've already had a ready extension on that to get that, um, funding source. So.
Conversations, but keep this in mind because I know people ask about it.
Yep.
And I know the local contractor, he asks me quite often, you know, hey, what's the timeline? How's it, you know?
Yeah, he's called me a couple of times and, I mean, I'd love to avoid causing too much disruption to the recreation season.
We also have to take advantage if we can get a boat ramp and get it approved. You know, sometimes painful decisions have to be made for the greater good down the road, i.e., um, Maine and Summit. You know, or Platt Street, Main Street, all those projects, you know, a lot of the street project, the bridge closing, we're closing for two weeks again, just because of the crack in a, in one of the approaches. So sometimes things have to be done, you know, because we don't want to lose money.
Yep, yep. So I think we'll be, uh, moving with some discussion near future on that one finally. So that's a good one.
Any progress in your building plans?
No, I had another question. I wanted to get over to talk with Jayden and see. I have, that's been a month and a half since we, and I know he, I stopped off and dropped some paperwork and some numbers and sizes for him and I haven't gotten over and sat down with Jayden on that. So, um, I know he's been really busy and I wanted to, but I need to get sit down with him.
So as far as, are we, we still considering location or different location or what's going on?
I think there's still consideration on whatever location is the most cost effective and physically responsible in my opinion. If it's what we can fit in there or whatever. So, um, that's, that's why I really want to sit down with Jayden and see what he can, see if he can put that stuff on CAD files and move things around and see what things look like. And so, um, hopefully he gets a little time to sit down and look at that.
And did we have some issues last year at the access point for the canoe or the adventure race down at Ironbridge?
No, it just last year, the only thing, it worked actually pretty good. It'd be nice if it was just moved back. I think we're gonna talk to the, the private landowner to the east or to the west side to see if we can use a little bit of their, they got an edging around their field to store some stuff.
Okay.
Um.
Did we have some mats or something or what?
Yeah, somebody put a steel thing down at the bottom and then I took the, the adventure race because it starts, it's that clayish kind of mud or whatever.
Okay.
And when it gets wet, it gets real slippery. We used weed bedding that Matty put down.
Okay.
We had some that, and that actually worked pretty good until it got covered with mud, but just to get them.
Some traction to get out.
Some traction. So.
Yeah.
The chamber's planning on doing that again.
Okay.
But if you guys could just mow the edges in there back as far as you can.
Yep.
Um, that was really helpful both sides, you know, the road, you know.
Get down there and look at it and see if it's silted in or anything that needs.
Yeah, I haven't, unfortunately, I won't be there this year to kind of, I ran that last year down there. So if anybody's looking for some volunteer time, the chamber's looking for people to kind of help run that, that exchange. And that's just more helping place kayaks and canoes and controlling more traffic from the pickup teams that want to come down and.
Yeah.
And, uh, um, we, you know, last year again, we thanked the road crew from secondary roads. We thanked the sheriff's department because they kind of controlled traffic across the bridge and stuff because the amazing amount of spectators that parked on the east side of the bridge and came down and were standing on the bridge watching. So that, and, uh, Glenn Short from Black Hills come down with his vehicle with the lights and they really kind of made an awareness that people slowed way down for that. So that was quite, that was quite helpful.
Yep.
But, uh.
Because you had other people in the community.
Because you have other people in the community that don't know what's going on, and they're still traveling the road like.
Oh, yeah, yep, so.
But we had quite a bit of signage, we had quite a bit, um so it worked well, so yeah, that that exchange point. That could always be better.
I wish it was bigger.
When we do, when we do Iron Bridge, uh you know, with our grants and stuff coming up, that that's one of the considerations. We're looking forward to see if there's some money out there.
Yeah.
To kinda help accentivize.
Yeah, um yeah, yeah, that that'd be a good one, so. I'll bring that one up to my staff just to make sure they're aware. I haven't seen, what were the dates on that?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth of June.
June.
June twenty eighth.
Okay.
Be, you know, like I said, there'll be people, there'll be somebody stationed there watching canoes at before seven, and there's people gonna be there, so probably two or three in the afternoon, but. If anybody wanted to help volunteer to run that point, that would be, that would be can, that'd be mu- much helpful, much appreciated.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. We'll make sure that's on the list too.
Yes, thank you much. If you don't have anything else, anybody got anything for Nathan?
No. That's it.
Alright, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for the support, Mary. Next up is Becky Chapin, uh Director of Human Resources.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things for you this morning, so we have all received notice of retirement from our zoning administrator, Lori Rolling. Um she has given notice that she will be retiring after three years in the department, which will be effective August first. I would ask for a motion to accept the notice of retirement from Lori Rolling effective August first, twenty twenty five.
Strong move. I would second that motion and thank her for her past contribution to uh the county's workforce.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the accept or accept the notice of re- uh retirement from Lori Rolling. Effective August first, twenty twenty five. Any other discussion? Lori, you have anything you wanna add?
She's on, but not listening.
Hearing not, we appreciate your time and service.
No, I'm I'm good, but thank you.
Alright, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries, enjoy.
And then with that being said, um the administrative assistant for the zoning and health department, Becca Pluffhout. Is interested in um additional responsibilities that come with the administrator position. Um I've had several conversations with both of the departments, um and everybody involved thinks that it would be a positive transition um for her to. Um attempt the increased responsibilities on an interim basis. Um I would ask for a motion to approve Becca Pluffhout as the interim zoning administrator for a six month period. Starting July first, twenty twenty five, at an hourly rate of thirty point or thirty seventy eight per hour.
Strong move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve uh Becca Pluffhout uh as interim zoning administration. Administrator for a six month period starting July first, twenty twenty five, at an hour hourly rate of thirty dollars and seventy eight cent. Now, usually there is a statement in there that says unauthorizeding the.
Authorizing issue by weekly paychecks for the same.
Yeah, do we need that?
I overlooked it, um yeah.
Can we amend that? Can to include that verbiage?
Yeah, uh the, I was, yeah, as amended, also is there next, a short, a brief explanation on how you come up with the pay scale?
So this was calculated at, so Becca will work less hours, this was calculated at seventy five percent. On a reduced week hourly basis um of what the zoning administrator makes, so Lori's salary, six seventy five percent of that. Divided out by the amount of hours that she would work, so.
Alright, you good with that amendment? You got all the verbiage down? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Miss Lisa, you have the floor.
This morning, I need a motion to prevent the May twenty 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 five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorize publication of the official newspapers.
Strong move. I would second.
We got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the minutes of the May twentieth, twenty twenty five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication of the official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
As you know, three hundred and eighth street is uh the street that was done by special assessment from the landowners in that area. So they pay these payments that go into this fund, and then we have to transfer it to another fund, so I need a motion to approve. Resolution eleven nineteen dash zero five dash twenty seven dash twenty twenty five. For an operating transfer from the secondary road, three hundred and eighth street assessment fund, twenty thousand and one to the secondary road fund, twenty thousand. For thirty four thousand, seven hundred and thirty six dollars and eighty nine cents.
And is everyone up to date?
I don't know.
I would uh make the motion to approve resolution as presented.
I would second that.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve resolution eleven nineteen dash oh five dash twenty seven dash twenty twenty five. For operating transfer from secondary roads, three oh eighth street assessment fund. Two zero 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 one to secondary road fund, two thou- twenty thousand. For thirty four thousand, seven hundred and thirty six dollars, eighty nine cents, effective twenty seven, May twenty twenty five. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve invoices for five hundred and twenty dollars and twenty four cents to Midwest Construction Consultants. Two thousand dollars to Bill Ruth Builders, one thousand dollars to Kraus Plumbing and Heating, one thousand dollars to Geesler Brother Company. One thousand dollars to Rock River Electric Inc., one thousand dollars to Midwest Auto Fire and Sprinkler. Sixty two dollars and twenty six cents to Macoco to lumber and four hundred and twenty dollars to A T disposal. For a total of seven thousand, two dollars and fifty cents, and authorize the chair signature on the final project cost recap for the law enforcement center. For invoices and work completed as of April fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Strong move. I would second.
We got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve invoices of five hundred and twenty dollars, twenty four cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, two thousand to Bruce Builders. One thousand to Kraus Plumbing, one thousand to Geesler Brothers, one thousand to Rock River, one thousand to Midwest Auto Fire. Uh twenty or sixty two, twenty six to Macoco to lumber, four twenty to A T to disposal for a total of seven thousand, two dollars, fifty cents. Authorize the chair to sig- signature and accept the project recap cost as final to the law enforcement for these. Invoices and work completed as of April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Any other discussion?
So does that, when you say final project cost recap, does that include? Strong hold?
It does not.
Okay.
Because because my next motion to either you can, I can take it off the table and you can accept it, but. Um I need a motion to approve an invoice.
Let's finish up this one, then we can talk about that one. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The question then is, what do you wanna do with the stronghold industry's final bill, which is a hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety five dollars?
I would like to hold it yet until we get better results of work that needs done.
Well, according to our maintenance uh personnel is that we are having some issues yet. And they're not timely addressed the way it sounds. I don't know that we don't, yeah, I agree with Nen to say we need a little uh. Armstrong here to maybe. Get a little more action. I I don't know that we can just, I mean, either or, either we table it.
I'll just not even ask for a motion.
There you go.
Good.
If that's the wishes of the board, I won't ask for a motion.
Well, I won't, I won't agree to it. I will tell you that if there's a motion, because I I just, I think we need to have some work completed and and a better, a little more action. Taken on on some of these issues that really should be addressed, I mean, sooner than later.
In a conversation I had with John last last week, he suggested that we pay everything and that we can hold their bond. Um I'm in agreement with you, Mike, in the fact that I think this is a little bit more immediate in nature versus chasing bonds after the fact kinda thing. I think this gives us a little bit more leverage right now, and uh. I, you know, there are emails, it sounds like they do try to respond, it's just, it isn't so much trying to fix the whole problem as much as just doing enough.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of not paying somebody for their work, but to me, it's gotta be completed, finished and right. And and done, I mean, obviously, we have issues yet.
I've received no correspondence from them concerning the final payment. I did from somebody else. So.
Do you just not wanna offer, do you guys wanna?
I'm not gonna offer then. That's what you want, I mean.
Well, let's just, let's, let's just table that way the board's taking action, you have firm directive.
And we can keep it on the agenda, then we could, you know.
You know.
That's fine, you need a motion table, I would make a motion to table the uh, do you wanna read that or do you want to?
Or do you make a motion not to pay at this time?
Either or, either way, I'm not paying.
I haven't put the motion on the table yet.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
You tell me what you'd like me to do.
I'd like the board to take action.
So then I guess I would ask for a motion to not approve the invoice. Not to pay the invoice. I would make a motion not to pay the invoice for a hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety five dollars to stronghold industries.
I would make that motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to not pay the invoice of a hundred and fourteen thousand, three ninety five to stronghold industries. Um for the final project cost recap for the law enforcement center. As, so we are not.
The motion to say not pay at this time.
We'll take, well, so we'll pay that as we.
We're not, we're not.
It would be then two weeks after that.
We're not totally refusing not to pay the invoice. I don't want people to think that we're not gonna pay this guy's payment. I want it to be that we're not gonna pay it at this time.
So we're not gonna, you're not gonna authorize me to pay.
No.
To. Not authorize the payment of a hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety five dollars to stronghold industries.
At this time.
Industries, yeah.
That your motion?
Yeah.
Your second?
That's fine.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, and um so we're at the other part of my agenda that is the expensive part of the agenda. You know that our voting machines have, um they're at end of life, basically. The software that is in them um will not be supported by the Unison company. And we have looked at purchasing new um voting equipment, both the scanners. Uh and we call them the scanners and the handicap machines. Um I've done some code reading, I believe that we need to buy fourteen scanners and fourteen handicap machines. Um I was in in visiting with Bjorn because our our processing of voters is done by laptop computers. And because of the switch over from Windows ten to Windows eleven, we were gonna have to purchase all new um laptops. And the laptops are supported by a program called IPAC or Iowa Precinct Atlas Consortium. And this was something that was started by a county auditor in central Iowa many years ago. On how to process voters and and it's evolved from being a county program to a statewide program. And we pay into it, um and as changes are done with the elections cycles and laws and such, those changes are done. The, what is happening right now is we were going to purchase thirty six to forty laptops. Um and stay with IPAC or I have this precinct atlas consortium. The problem is, is that I'm hearing is that there are some larger counties in the state of Iowa that are also leaving IPAC. So my problem is, is we could spend forty thousand dollars for a new processing of. Uh the voters on election day, and say in two years, it's no longer viable for IPAC to stay in existence. And we would be, we'd have to abandon ship. We've already spent forty thousand for these laptops. So we had at the time that Mark Fredericks from Atkins, Henry Atkins Company came in to demonstrate the voting machines. He also showed us um a thing called ten X, and ten X is a precinct central, they're touchpads, and that's how we're gonna process voters. So this is a little bit more than the forty thousand, because we now have to also buy the software. But I don't wanna take the risk because of these bigger counties that are leaving IPAC, that in two or three or let's say six months. You know, that it does not become viable for them to stay, you know, afloat, so to speak. So I am suggesting that we accept a proposal from Henry M. Atkins and Sons Inc. For fourteen unison freedom vote scans, which are called F V Ss, precinct scanners with a ballot box. Um and also with um, it's called unison freedom vote tablets, F V Ts. Um those are what we call the handicap machines for a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty four dollars. And I also am asking for um approval. That I can purchase thirty four ten X precinct central touchpads, including delivering setup training in precinct central. The county council for fifty eight thousand, four hundred and eighty six dollars. The combined cost of the equipment is a hundred and seventy three thousand and forty dollars, including a twelve thousand, six hundred dollar discount. With the purchase being paid over several fiscal years.
And what did we have budgeted in the current fiscal year?
So we had money budgeted for new voting machines, we also had money budgeted for um, the way that I've looked at this. That I believe um because of also not having the employee in the auditor's office. My, what I'm going to propose to um the Atkins Company is that for fiscal year twenty five, which will be paid here in June. Um thirty thousand towards the ten X proposal and thirty thousand towards the. Uh voting machines, so sixty thousand will be paid here in the month of June in F Y twenty five. In F Y twenty six, we would pay twenty eight thousand, four hundred and eighty six dollars in payoff of ten X. Um touchpads, so we would have them all paid for in fiscal year twenty six. With a payment on the voting machines of twenty one thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. And how I came up with that is because we budgeted fifty thousand in F Y twenty six.
Okay, that still leaves us with.
So now we owe sixty three thousand and forty dollars for the voting machines. Of which I'm proposing in F Y twenty seven, we pay thirty three thousand and forty dollars. And in F Y twenty eight, we pay the remainder thirty thousand.
Okay, that sounds reasonable to me.
Are they amicable with that?
So when I visited with Mark, he said that I um ten X would not be. Open to anything more than a two year period. I mean, basically, we're gonna have this paid for right away. The ten X proposal will get paid for right away, so we'll pay, so yeah, because we have.
Well, I mean, within two months, or.
So we're gonna have the, and that's what we were gonna have to do anyway if we bought the.
And what does, what does that give us for timeframe as a? I know you're talking two, three years, and things change dramatically in two, three years, but how long does this put us out before we get a new one? We don't know.
These were eight years old.
They're nine years old.
And the software is, I mean, that's just.
These are going with that software that you're talking about that we've been using?
So we will be leaving the IPAC.
Okay.
Yes, we will be leaving that. I just got a bill from him for forty five hundred dollars for maintenance, so. You know, obviously, we'll have maintenance with the ten X proposal, at least for a year, we should, you know, we'll be okay. So that's why.
With the ten X proposal though, you think that puts us out further with the board?
I think that that there are a lot of com- uh counties in the state of Iowa that have ten X, and I'd look for them to be a viable company for many years to come. I look for the support that we have from them, because there are so many um counties in the state of Iowa that have it. That, yeah, and they're a U S wide company, so it's not just like kinda just. It's not like our IPAC, which is here in Iowa. This is a across the United States company and. You know, who knows with computers, you know, we're having to spend forty, or potentially we had to spend forty thousand because of of a Windows.
Right.
Issue, so no, I don't know how long, hopefully.
Yeah, so right now, we are just, you are approving the motion to purchase, I mean, they're not, yeah.
Yes, so actually, I'm ax- I'm asking for a motion to approve the purchase from Henry M. Atkins and Sons. For fourteen unison freedom vote scanners, fourteen freedom vote tablets, and thirty four ten X precinct. Center of touchpads, including delivering setup training and freight, for a hundred and seventy three thousand and forty dollars.
Strong move.
Second thought.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve purchase of the Henry Atkins and Sons Incorporated for fourteen unison freedom. Vote scanners and fourteen freedom vote tablets, including all hardware and software training and freight for a total of a hundred and fourteen thousand, five. Fifty four and thirty four ten X precinct central touchpads, including delivery setup training. Precinct central coun- console for fifty eight, four eighty six, for a total of a hundred and seventy three, I have a hundred and seventy three thousand, forty dollars. Any other discussion?
I have one question, just looking at these totals, so you're doing fourteen, fourteen, obviously twenty eight. But we're getting thirty four of the. But we're getting thirty four of the touchpads.
So we would, so you have thirteen precincts. Every precinct gets at least two, but there are some precincts that will receive four, as in Bellevue. Uh, the Bellevue precinct has, you know, a lot of registered voters, over two thousand registered voters in it. So they will receive four. Of the ten X touchpads. Lamont will be receiving three. And Preston, it's another big precinct, they will be receiving three. And the sixth precinct here in Macocata at the fairgrounds will be receiving three. So we had to keep it even. Um, I originally wanted, and so what we did is we needed to have a backup and that we also need to have them in the. Office here. So when the election officials call into us, that we can help them assist them with the program. Um, so basically I have two extra spares, but if one goes down, then that has to leave the office and go to the precinct. So that's how we kind of came up with that. Originally we were thinking forty, but I think we can do it for less.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
That's all that I have for the board today. Thank you.
Very, Ms. Luann.
Calendar for this week. Um, this afternoon at four o'clock is an early childhood Iowa council meeting into it, run in. And at seven o'clock is a Jackson County Board of Adjustment Meeting, um, downstairs in the community room for any of you. Wednesday, May twenty eighth at six thirty PM is a. Jackson County Municipal League Meeting. I believe that's going to be out here at the new Law Enforcement Center for Mike. And at seven o'clock tomorrow night will be a Jackson County EMS Association meeting in Preston. For any of you. Thursday, May twenty ninth at four PM is a Behavioral Health Tower Hall Meeting by Zoom for any of you that. Want to attend that. Expect Nan will want to go to that. Um, also I have an addition from Mike that he has a meeting at six o'clock that night, um, at Baldwin. At the Baldwin City Council? Monday, June second at eleven AM, um, is a Northeast Iowa. Area Agency on Aging Public Hearing on their area plan. Um, it's by Zoom and it's open for anybody. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, June third at nine AM. And that afternoon from two forty five until eight o'clock, there's different times available. Will be the Iowa Economic Development Association Bellevue Downtown Assessment Meetings. So those times are all in your calendar. You can take your pick for any of you. Um, the next day, I don't have it on here, but the next day and the fourth will have, um, afternoon hours. Available to do that. And then on the fifth at noon is their public meeting. It should be talking about what they've. What they found in their assessment. And we'll do this again in August. The bit of business that I have is I need, um. Discussion.
I think I got two.
On the fireworks permit? You didn't want to?
No, I didn't need to, especially if you didn't have one.
Sorry. Discussion possible on a fireworks permit request from Brian Peterson, um, in Zwingo. And he has had them in the past. And he's been helping us work on our new policy, which has been started. So I'm looking for approval of a fireworks permit for him through July. Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion approved, fireworks, uh, permit for Brian Peterson. For July fourth, eight thirty to eleven PM, rain data on the fifth. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we just have, uh, Capitol Campaign coming in and, uh, a work session. So. Any border commission reports to report on?
Had ECI council meeting last Wednesday and, uh, the new executive director was there and run the meeting. And was part of our, the whole due process and, uh, sounded very positive. Uh, the strategic plan that was done to Northeast. All the colleagues and I. Northern Iowa, the, the Ted students here, or people here during the strategic plan and. That's complete. So it'd be a three year plan at this point, uh, review and. And, uh, again, looks very positive. There's a lot of input from personnel, staff and, uh, went well. Had a haycap, uh, meeting, surgery maybe. Again, they're really, um. On aware of how the funding and how it's going to go. It looks pretty positive for this year yet, as far as their programs and. Um, it was pretty astounding how many meals and how many. Um, programs they really do participate in and for the lower poverty level. I really need to touch base with the Head Start people here and see. You know, what kind of help they're receiving and our local food banks and such, so. I'll, I'll update you on that when I receive more information.
RPA, basically they have some funding available, some grants that are opening back up.
Yeah, that was it. That's a trail assistance plan, isn't it? They, they put it out for bid, um, for. People could apply, nobody did. So they're going to change it maybe, because there was a cap, I think in two hundred and fifty thousand. They're thinking maybe they might either raise. Raise that because.
But there is a match to it also, and they kind of said that some of the issue is. Cities not knowing what they had funds available for really, with not knowing how some things are going to play out maybe and.
My concern is if the smaller communities couldn't come up with a match to get to the two fifty, if they raise it to five hundred or seven fifty.
Can they come up with the match?
They can't come up with the match there and will that just basically mean all the bigger metropolitan?
Right, because at one point they talked about just leaving the top wide open and that's like. Then I see that funding getting used by, uh, like Don said, a bigger area and then there is no funding. Maybe in a year from now or whatever to for these smaller cities to go after.
Like the, the county of the secondary roads, when they do projects or bid these projects, they kind of put a bundle, bundle things. I wonder if they could do that somehow.
Well, and they talked about opening some things up to bundle between tri-counties.
Cities and stuff like that. So they're reevaluating, but they want to bring it back to the board in June. So maybe they can reopen it in for July and then we can come back to see, because this is from, this is for the period of twenty six through twenty nine. So it's more of a window. So.
You know, they're talking about opening it up again in June. So if a city's, small city or whatever's got something out there that they're looking at, be getting your. Ducks in a row so that when it does open up, you can get it submitted in there and. And let it go, so.
Um, JCE met, JCEA met last week and unfortunately I was unable to make the meeting because my grandson was born that day. And I thought he was more important to go see. So I went to see my grandson and, uh. So, but I didn't really, I talked to a couple of people that are there. They said it was pretty much business as usual and things they were talking about the. The childhood study and things, um. That's all I got. So we don't have anything.
We just regular couple of work sessions and that's all we have, correct?
No, Dylan's actually on the. So, yeah. We just got a couple of work sessions, so.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second then.
Motion by Mike, second by Nan to adjourn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.